I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Policy Committee. July 14. Yes, there. All right. I'd call it to order. Before we begin, we are doing this hybrid, so there are people participating online and in person, so I'd like to identify who is in the room at this time. So we have Robin and Molly are here helping us get all set up technology. Wendy Cartlich, Dr. Watts, Robert Otting, myself. And online, the board members that we have are Kathy Robine, Mel Campbell, David Strippinger, Dr. Wisnewski, and Mr. Smith. I see him down, I see him right at the bottom. And, okay. So just let's do a sound check. Can everybody online hear us? If you could just thumbs up or something, thank you Kathy. David, great, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and begin. As is our custom, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business is to approve the agenda. So Kathy or Rachel, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. We do have some members in the audience for public comment, so we will go to public comment right now.
We just got papers, so you're on my booth in the next aisle because we just got the paper.
All right, so as some of the public commenters are filling out the papers, we're just going to go ahead and let's move on with the approval of the July 7th committee meeting minutes. Have a motion?
I move we approve the July 7th committee meeting minutes.
I'll second and ask just for one moment.
Okay, there's a correction.
I'm just double checking it real quick. I didn't want to vote. There was just one thing I wanted to check.
Let me put it up online. Can you see it? Want me to keep scrolling?
Oh, we're good, thank you.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the July 7th committee, say aye.
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 Right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, great. So Mr. Earl Campbell has joined us online and Dr. Candace Bruder has joined us in house. All right, so let's go back to public comments.
I'm not sure, I got a.
But they don't, they're not.
We only had one, we only had.
Right, committee meetings, we just have one public comment.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. All right, so first one. Presti Alexander.
That's me.
Hi, would you, I think we can hear you from there unless you want to come some forward.
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah.
As you said, my name is Presti Alexander. And, um, my, I don't have an issue, but I think if we're going to talk about mascot and we're going to talk about the logos, then I think there may be a little bit of confusion about the two. I think the mascot, you know, which is, you know, proudly displayed all around school and stuff. And I'm not exactly sure whether the mascot is what's on the field or it's just a logo. And I think that's something that needs to be, you know, ironed out because I think the mascot is something that shows your pride. I think if you're out there, click and the mascot is there. And I think when you look at, when you look at TV, that's what you see, you see the team's mascot. Now, the logo is a different thing. You know, if you're out there and you're thinking, I think we need to have something like, well, different than like on a hat or whatever. And I think maybe that's a logo. And I think that should be defined. So that there is no question in anybody's mind about what this is. This is a logo. This is not a mascot. Mascot is an official part of the school. This is, we as a team decided that we need to use this because we're proud of this. We think that this is going to stand out, you know. Well, this is what we're going to display. I definitely think that there should be discussions so that there's no issue about exactly what it is. We don't have problem. This is the mascot, this is an official part of the school. That's so that's, that's the only thing there. I'm really interested. We don't have logos, this is, this is a logo. This is not a mascot, so there is no confusion in anybody's mind. It's, it's what it represents to us. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
When you all come up here, we get a message that to speak up a little bit louder so people on Zoom.
Okay.
That's sorry. No, you're fine, I'm just trying to get a mic so when you come up speaking, you just speak up just a little bit louder.
Okay. Ms. Geraldine Doe.
Hi, come here, join us.
I see the job.
I'm not sure they can hear us.
Oh.
That's good, that's good.
I heard that.
Okay. I see on the agenda, y'all have O E eight ten. I guess that's referring to you want to change that is already there about the board approving for the mascot and is that what's on the agenda?
So what's on, so this is the Policy Committee. So what's on the agenda is we're going to be looking at our policies. Yes. Regarding naming of mascots, right?
But no changes in it.
Oh, we may suggest some changes to the policy. That's the purpose of the meeting.
Yeah, that's why, you know, I wanted to go after so I could understand, you know, what was the purpose. But anyway, my purpose is that we said that we're just going to change one logo. But I was concerned about the flying eagle being on the field. That's what we started with. That's what, that was our request, the mascot on the fields. And you, I don't know, I don't know what was placed on the board before. You know, they got it where they're going to take it down, but y'all already approved that that's coming, coming down. So the main issue now, the main issue now is the mascot on the field. That's the main, that's the main issue. Okay, and anywhere else we want flying, okay, the original eagle that we graduated with in 1971. And I think that y'all have a picture of that. I told you. Like I said at the meeting, it was an agreement between the schools. And the agreement was broken. Okay, and it did not come from the board, it came from the officials. And if you look at O E eight one ten, you will see the board was supposed to approve that. I believe, and that's what you all looking at tonight. Okay, so we'll see, you know, what you all will talk about tonight on how you're going to change it. But we want to stay with the original one until it's changed. That's it. Thank you.
Very much. Okay. Go ahead. Do you like some public comments? Okay.
You all the same thing.
Very good. All right, thank you very much for coming to the Policy Committee. And as stated on the agenda, the purpose, the entire purpose for this meeting today is to review our policies, which are G C three point eight and O E eight point ten. So let me just set some expectations for today's meeting, okay? This is a committee, committees don't decide anything. Committees bring forward recommendations to the full board to decide. Also, this will be the first time that we will be looking at these particular policies. So the process will have to be that whatever is decided or recommended here to bring to the full board, will have to go to the board for consideration. And then the board would consider it and it would have to then in a subsequent meeting be voted upon. Again, our purview is strictly dealing with policy and issues with policy, not any one item in particular. Okay? Um, so the two policies in question that deal with naming of mascots, naming of colors and naming of schools are the two that I just mentioned, which are G C three and O E eight point ten. Okay, so I'd like to open up the discussion with Dr. Wisnewski and Ms. Robine as the committee members, and then of course other board members who want to add in. And ask if over, while you were preparing for today's meeting, if you had any thoughts about G C three point eight. Okay, and let me just read it aloud. It says, make, so this all starts out with the board will. Okay, so that's like before you even see number one, you're going to see the board will. And the board will, right there, all those things that are listed below it. And number eight says, the board will name new facilities. Before a final vote on naming facilities, the board will contact local community leaders through public notice of a public hearing. So that is what we're looking at right now, just number eight. So Kathy, do you have some thoughts?
I do. I think that one of the reasons that we decided to look at these policies was to bring them into alignment with the administrative regulations. So if we look at administrative regulation, O S twenty eight, Roman numeral number four, appointment of board naming committee. It says if the building a new school results in the creation of a new school attendance, the board chairperson will appoint a naming committee. And then it goes on to identify who will be in the naming committee. So it makes sense to me that to our policy, we would add that the board will, you know, so naming new facilities, the board will appoint a naming committee to serve in an advisory capacity. And then we could list these things or we could either just say as specified in district regulations in N A R twenty, in N A R O S twenty eight.
Okay. Dr. Wisnewski?
That was my thought.
Yeah, thank you. Rachel, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes ma'am, so I, I agree, we need to take the totality of G C three point eight, O E eight point ten and A R O S twenty eight into consideration when we're modifying any of our policies. The only thing that I potentially disagree with that Ms. Robine stated was making a reference to an A R in our policies because the A Rs could, are changed by the district or the administration and it's not necessarily something, the A Rs are supposed to be guided by the policies. So we shouldn't reference them, I don't think necessarily. But I agree, we need to make everything come into alignment. I think that there's a bit of confusion when you do look at O E eight point ten. Because underneath the, the main heading where it discusses the naming of facilities, it then references in A or subpart A. That's where the mascots and the colors come in. So we need to make a clarification on is that committee tasked with mascots and colors and naming? Because it says that it's our final authority. So again, there's some confusion, I think, within our own policies and then making the A Rs and our policies align.
I agree with what, what you both have provided here. My thoughts on this were that we would look at the board policies. So along what you said, Rachel, is that the A Rs are derived from board policy. So, so, so I would agree that we need to make sure that our policies are such. And then the district would work on the A R to make sure that it was in line. So I had a suggestion for some wording for G C three point eight. Robin, I just sent it to you in a Word document through your email. So along with what Kathy was saying, and maybe to your point too, Rachel, I would suggest that three G C three point eight could be, could say, the board will name new schools, mascots and colors. The selection of a name, mascot or colors will be made after consideration of recommendations provided to the board by a board appointed ad hoc committee serving in an advisory capacity. So you'll see that right there. So yeah, so I, you know, sometimes it's easier to work from a written document and, and so it's just all being verbal. So go ahead, Rachel, what do you think?
I was going to say, that sounds much more clear. And I think that addresses the issue that's in eight point ten A. I think the only clarification that we, we need to make is the makeup of that ad hoc committee. Because I know in the A R presently, it talks about the, the composition of that committee and who would be serving on it. And I think it's even perhaps superintendent appointed or board chair appointed, I can't remember. So those are the two things that just stick out to me. But I think that the beginning of it where we clarify naming mascots and colors is great.
And, and so Rachel, to that point, I thought that to get too much into the weeds as to who has to be on that committee, I thought that by saying that it's a board appointed ad hoc committee, that certainly they would include community members and school, you know, for a new school, you're not going to have, you're not going to have a principal, you're not going to have. So anyway, so I wasn't sure about getting so far down into the weeds that it, that might be addressed in the A R. I don't know. David, your thoughts?
I agree with what you just said. I think that A R can elaborate on the policy. But the only thing is, we say naming new schools, I thought we were going to make it all encompassing and just say name schools. My other question is to Wendy is, is it a state statute that we name schools? I think it is. I think it's derived from the state statute.
In the statute about that, that the board controls the educational interest of the, of the school district. And that is exactly how it's interpreted. We looked at some of the other school districts. Sorry about that. It's the statute says that the board controls the educational interest of the district and board has the ability to buy, lease or sell. And the board has the duty and authority to take care of managing old school property of the district. That is your, part of your statutory.
So David, to just respond to your comment. Yes, we, number eight does say new schools, but then I am proposing a recommendation for a number nine. To consider and decide on changes to a school's name, mascot or colors after receiving a recommendation from a committee comprised of a requesting school's S I C members, staff, students and community members. So, Dr. Watts?
Thank you, can you hear me? Oh, here. So some of the points have already been made, but you know, yes, our, the board policy, what is what drives our administrative regulations. And if you look at the date on the A R is June of two thousand and fifteen, and as we know, our coherent governance manual is much newer than that. So that's why there's a discrepancy. Let's explain. Um, I, so in terms of, let's go to G C three eight. And, you know, I agree that that's kind of, doesn't define naming new facilities well enough and it leaves off because we already pointed out colors and the, and the mascots. And, you know, I don't think, before a final, and what it says right now is before a final vote on naming facilities, we wouldn't contact local community leaders through public, a public notice of a public hearing. This is just naming only. And so I think your recommendation, if you scroll back to that, Robin, what Tricia has proposed is much better. What I see as a problem, Tricia, is that you have a board appointed ad hoc committee. And I think that has to be defined. Is it, is that a board committee, a community committee? Who is that committee? And I think somebody just already said that.
That is all kind of board committee. Is it an advisory committee or? Well, in the past in naming the schools, it was a board committee. And it was the board in the school that was going to be in that district or area. It has been the representative of that district who led that, that committee. It has been the representative of that district who led that that committee. And the committee was made of feeder schools that was going to, we're talking about new schools now.
Right.
Uh going to the new school. So I E when May River opened, it was the left and high. And it was community members that were going over to the feeder school. But the board member who was representing um chair like Pritchaville's, Ms. Eva Anderson. She chaired that committee um when we were naming Pritchaville, Riverage, one of the two.
Okay, we're like their parents or?
So it was parents, it was this business partners at the school, the community partners, it was the S I C. The principal at the feeder school was the one who uh reached out to, they had students involved on it. Uh they had this, the community business partners, um county council, I'm not county council, but. Student council and stuff involved in it. So those were the people that comprised of the committee.
So how would you look, Dr. Watts? What do you have to change us?
Well, I think we need to what define that committee. Well, let's just talk for a second because I have the bottom over here. So uh uh provided to the board by a board appointed ad hoc committee. Serving in an advisory capacity. Then you could put that the uh committee uh members will include. Um the the uh. They should probably the chair should be the person that's uh represents the geographical region where the new school is being proposed. Yeah, that should be the chair.
Trustee of.
So that district area involved?
Yeah, it should be the chair and then I the. Now the chair, so the S I C is not going to be there yet because we're talking to build new schools.
Right, so it what it so how they did that was the students that were going over there.
Yeah.
So that I mean, it was the previous, it was the feeder school, it's like C. Chair, but they were also like if it was rising juniors, they had the sophomore class. Uh who are going to be rising juniors over at the new school, they got those students and uh they grade level. People to be on the committee because they would be the rising students into the new school.
So do you think that in policy, we have to go to this to identify exactly whom or when such an event occurs? This conversation will happen at a board meeting as to who will be on there. Okay, Rachel, do you have some thoughts on that?
Um I have a couple. One suggestion would be just to um add the word. Community in between ad hoc and committee. So that it's called an ad hoc community committee that kind of implies that it's going to be made up of more than just board members. It's going to have community member stakeholders, things like that. That's my initial suggestion. If we don't want to get into the weeds of the composition of it. Um I know that the composition of the committee is discussed in A R O S twenty eight. Lists out all those, um but I think that. A R and of course, the district is going to go back after we finalize this policy and they will massage the A R to fit. Um but that one only speaks of the naming of new schools. It doesn't talk about mascots and colors and things like that, so. Um when it talks about committee makeup.
Well, it does say the selection of a mascot or colors.
Oh, hang on, let me look.
Well, I think she means the A R, right, Rachel?
I meant the A R, yeah.
A R does say it in um D underneath the naming committee. Shall compile a list, so.
Okay. So then then that might address it if we just call it a a community committee. And we say that they're serving in that advisory capacity. Um that that aligns, I think.
That's exactly, actually, when you read that, that's the first thing that I found in my head was what's with the word community. So I think that's I agree with you, Rachel. And then let's cut, let's let's not say members.
Right.
Yeah, I guess better.
Okay, so you all are okay with leaving the.
The A R will have to come after these changes in policies might be approved by the board.
And then we'll go back to make revisions and we'll talk about it. Okay, I got it. Do you want me to start? No, okay, don't start doing it now.
No, don't. William, you have something to say?
Uh yes, uh my my uh I actually kind of dipped it in the bud just now uh when we talking about um. Talking about a uh the committee members and so when we said the two hundred and I've been I've been because um. We're talking about the chair of the board, I mean the chair of the board should be uh basically directing. Who's who to invite in terms of a different grass area because if you're the chair, even if you're the area.
I think you misunderstood, Dr. Watts. She said the chair of that new committee should be whoever represents that area.
Okay, right, but then also I I I think there's something that we that we read is in the chair point we first read.
Well, in the A, that's in the, I think it's in the A R, but the A R will have to come into alignment with whatever.
Okay, well, I heard somewhere, but I but I wasn't sure, but that I did not.
Right. Yeah, so now, so again, the A R is going to be have to be revised based on the board's size of the policy.
So we shouldn't be discussing the A Rs because the A Rs, we have nothing to do with what with what we're doing.
Right, that's kind of a what we decided that the A R will have to follow the policy, so that will be a different. I I could, you know, yeah, first of all, this is actually approved by the board anyway, so, okay. All right, so are we good with G C three eight? Does everybody agree that that addresses that? And that's Rachel?
Are are we going to have it just be for new schools or are we going to address all schools?
Okay, so I'm I'm just, yeah, I'm throwing it out there as for number nine. This would be an addition, G C three point nine. So again, the board will consider and decide on changes to a school's name. Mascot or colors after receiving a recommendation from a committee comprised of the requesting schools. S I C members, staff, students and community members. So tear it apart. I just wanted to start with something. So this would be for anything that was not a brand new school. Rachel?
Yes ma'am, so my only question is process. So if a um just a hypothetical. If a school decided that they wanted to form or the principal wanted to form a committee comprised of S I C staff, students and community members. Because they saw a need to change the name mascot and colors. They are creating their own committee and then they're coming to the board. To ask us to consider and decide those things. Is that what the process would look like?
That's sad, but yes.
Because in A, the board is directing the creation of the committee. Um and so I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process of if there's going to be any existing facility that needs an or any existing school that needs a name change. That basically the school itself could come create a committee at any point in time. And bring that forward.
Right, so so that's what I'm I'm suggesting. Now we now throw in some clarifying words in there if need be. But but I'm bringing forward the suggestion that if it's an organic request from a school. That they have to go through the process of putting together a committee. And coming up and with a recommendation to bring forward to the board, so. Kathy?
Well, I think this is similar to the way um adjunct facilities are named.
Uh we lost you there.
I have a question back to you.
Okay, I think you're frozen, Kathy. So um, okay, you're back?
Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, we lost you there.
All right, all right. I was just saying, I think um that what this is trying to. Do is, you know, we we currently have a policy like this for adjunct facilities, right? Um a couple like that uh committee, the the S I C committees. Get together, they decide we want something named, like when they wanted uh the track named after Mr. Glaze. They ran it through their committee, they came to the school board and they sought approval. So that's.
So that's for the A R, yeah, that that's for the.
Is that A R? I thought it was in our policy as well.
So on number ten, it says um. O E eight ten, the superintendent shall. Ensure that any committee is appointed to recommend school names, understand that. And then letter C says adjunct facilities and athletic facilities may be named for individuals as specified in district A Rs.
So we just, our policy didn't uh signify how that came about and that's what this is trying to do now. Got it.
When I was preparing for today's meeting and I was reading through all this and coming up with some. Ideas, that's how I took it, Kathy, but I I I'm not sure if everybody's in agreement, so.
No, I I think that I I agree with that. I think I thought that I had, I've been reading it so many times, I thought that that was already in there, but. Must be in the A R.
Yeah, there's there's a there's a real process in the A R about names, uh roman numeral five. And exactly what to do for naming adjunct facilities, right? So um. William?
Yes, I have a question. Uh well, actually, I actually have a concern. I think that same policy that we have. I think that's what it hasn't, that's what guys, where we are right now. Uh and and and.
What policy that we, which one?
Basically, basically using what you just said, because what happens is. The same S I C could from what what I've been we've been told and have a couple of conversations today. That the S I C and in that they did talk about the changing of 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 how to even look at that S I C meeting and they were okay with that. So I think that we we need to go deeper, that does a a a decision that seriously. Needs to come to the district level and to the board because the the people elect the board. To overlook things of that nature, so therefore that needs to come to the board, not to.
But Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
So this this would come to the.
That's not how I understand it. What you what you just said was that. The principal can get a committee, the principal should not be doing that. I I I I I differ there because because that's what happened the first time and that's how it got passed is because. The S I C and the principal them, they discussed the situation of the eagle. So if that if it came to the board the first time, then the committee would have noted about it. But being that being that the principal did do, I guess what A R said, then that's why we had no idea. So that's also therefore you have to get a different result, you have to do something different.
So therefore, that's. May may just make sure, because I gotta make sure I'm just serious saying, we're not talking about an A R, okay?
Right.
We're talking, okay, so we're talking about a board policy, so right here, let let me finish, okay? So if. Some school wants to change their name, their mascot or their colors.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Then that school will have to get together a committee. Hey, just let me finish, a committee comprised of the S I C members. Now, this is just a suggestion. We have this no wearing policy.
Right.
That this doesn't exist.
Right.
So they would have to a committee comprised of the requesting schools, S I C members. Staff, students and community members. They talk about it and they bring their recommendation to the board. That did not happen. In the instance in which you are speaking, about which you were speaking, so.
The only part didn't happen, they did get, they did get community members and they did get S I C members, all that, that did happen. But the part that only part that didn't happen in any fits and I what I'm gonna call it a a a spade a spade. Only that didn't happen that it didn't bring us the board.
So that's what I was saying.
That's why we're trying to do this.
No, from from the from coming out of the gates, the board should be involved. Look, the board shouldn't be involved on the back end of it because how do I as a board member and I represent an area? How do I know that all the that the correct constituents are on there? So and also that's also, that's also a turn or in terms of relationships. With with a board member should have a relationship with everyone along within that process. So therefore, now you're shutting that board member out because you're bringing it back at the last at the last minute.
But but Mr. Smith, I I I'm not sure, but I know that several board members attend every S I C meeting of their schools. Oh, my goodness, I mean, I and so if if you are, that talk about relationships. If you attend the S I C meetings of the schools in your area, you know what the S I Cs are talking about. And so to to to, i- if I'm understanding you.
Everyone don't do that.
No, I understand.
I'm just saying, every every board member don't don't do that. I think that's the way of downplaying it. If it's in the right, if it's in black and white. It happens, if it's not, then everything everything, that doesn't matter. So it doesn't matter. I I came about the assumption that every board member is going there. I'm going basically off of what's in black and white because sometimes we intend to go straight off of black and white. So if we're gonna go straight off of black and white, then it should come to bottom line is my point is that the whole process. Just at the board level and 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 they should be working together to get it done. That's that's my point.
No, thanks. So your your opinion is valid, this is not everybody else's, so, okay. Uh, Mr. Earl Campbell?
Um I've been sitting here listening to. Call all the comments. And it seems to me that. We 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 don't really understand what we're doing. If you remember. When May River came to us. About the color and the mascot, it came from the school, it did not came for the board members. And the first time they came to us. We disapprove it because of uh I think the the mascot. Or something about a sword or something like, and then they went back, they went back and they came back the second time and we approve it. And that's the way it's been, it 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 should be done. The board doesn't have no. Uh business if a school and 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 the uh. The community want to change the number, change the color of the school, I mean, the mascot or any colors. That should come, the recommendation come from them, not the board and not the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wisnewski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um can can you just scroll up so I can see eight real quick? I was just gonna, I want to make sure I'm clear, so that number eight's new schools, number nine is going to be existing schools. But is this also encompassing adjunct facilities?
That's number ten.
So, um. What do you think? Please throw in, do you think it should? Please, please, guys, I just did this to have as a starting point. Um so what do you think, Rachel?
I greatly appreciate you doing it too, because this is it, it's gonna help us save a lot of time. Um, so I think nine should be existing schools and there may need to be some very. Uh plain one in regard to an adjunct facility. I like number nine. I think the only thing that I I feel is strong in the A R that I pulled out of the the A R. Is that it requires a two thirds of vote. Um the adjunct facilities naming of them is limited to S I Cs, so it's not a committee. It's just the S I C of that school or area comes together to name that adjunct facility. And it requires a two thirds vote and I think that's strong um and something that we may want to consider um encompassing. So I think nine should be limited just to existing schools um. And to require a two thirds vote similar to um what adjunct facilities do presently.
I think that's a great suggestion. Why don't you, where would you add that in?
Okay, let me read. After receiving a. Let me look real.
Recommendation supported by two thirds, what was that thing, Rachel, Rachel?
Yeah, a recommendation that, and we can, I can take this, this is just me taking language from the A R. Must be endorsed by at least a two thirds vote of the S I C.
Okay.
Sorry, not the S I C, the committee, my apologies.
After receiving a recommendation that was endorsed by. Okay.
At least a two thirds vote of the committee.
Okay.
Is of blah blah.
Right. That makes it much stronger.
I, you know, that's great.
Were you gonna say that or something?
No, I was uh. I was thinking, I think what her, what Rachel recommended is really good, because I was also thinking that maybe we could combine eight and nine. But I think it's better. Here's new, here's existing, this is the way we do it. Yes, but yeah.
Okay, all right, so. It's on the A R. What we could just, okay, Rachel, say it again, after receiving a recommendation. Of at least have a minimum of two thirds.
Receiving a recommendation.
Endorsed by a minimum of two. Endorsed by a minimum of two-thirds of committee members?
A recommendation that must be endorsed.
Just, just, she's just saying it for you now.
Let's go back to recommendation.
I hear people speaking.
I know.
A recommendation. That must be endorsed.
Must be endorsed.
You're on, Rachel.
By at least a two-thirds vote. And then from a.
Okay.
That.
All right, excellent. Great changes. All right, Tina.
No, that's, that's real good.
Okay, David?
Thanks, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I would like to consider adding that to number eight also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also.
Okay. Okay, all right. Um, so David, you're suggesting that the ad hoc committee brings forth a recommendation that, that it also has had a two-thirds vote from each committee?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I think that's just a really, really great idea.
Excellent. So David's suggesting back a number eight. Hey, David, could you, um, say that for Rob, and where you think that would go?
After considering a recommendation that must be endorsed by at least two-thirds vote from the committee, exact same wording we have in number nine.
And then you can take out, sorry.
No.
To say two-thirds vote by a board-appointed ad hoc community committee. So take it. By a. There you go.
Okay. All right, so excellent suggestions, guys. Good work. So let's talk now about adjunct facilities. And if you go down to adjunct facilities in OE8, um, I just suggested, so the OE8 says, "A superintendent shall ensure that any committees appointed to recommend to the board school names, mascots, or colors, understand that." And it says in here, adjunct facilities, including athletics, may be named for individuals, but it doesn't really give us a process. So do you want to, um, pretty much copy the procedure for adjunct that we have for changing to a backup of that, to what we just finished?
Well, actually, if we, before you move on, can we spell out what that process looks like as well? Because, because it, it's, to me, still left, left, for interpretation. And so I think if we spell out what the process is like, then I, I think it's, it's, it's less room for interpretation.
Okay, so, like what? Why don't you go ahead? Why don't you spell it? I mean, what are you, what are?
I'm asking.
What if the process that this person assigns this position is going to do? What are they assigned to do?
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, but we got to. Thank you. So William, you explain what you think the process is and what, how would you like to change this? Bring forward your ideas.
What, what, is, is that, okay, well, actually, what, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, what do this process like? How does this process start? I mean, you know, we, we're saying, actually, did we start on A or we started, we started on A?
We're, we're, we're on number nine. We just finished number nine.
Right, but I'm, 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 before we move on, that's, that everything that we're doing, what's the, what, what does the process look like? It's, it's, because when this is represented to me, my question will be, what is the, what is the process, and what does that look like?
Okay, so if we start at number eight, the process would be that we have just built a new school, and we gotta name that school. We all know we have to name that school, so the process will be that, hey, the school is built, it needs a name. We'll know that as a board.
Right.
So, okay, number nine, we're going to have someone in the school level or community that goes to the school and says, we need to change this. Okay, we need to change this. And the principal would say, well, by order of the policy, right, and the AR that gives the process, not the policy, but the AR will give the process, we've gotta put together a commit, a community committee. And that committee must be comprised of what was in the, what will be in the AR, and they have to vote, a two-thirds vote to bring that recommendation to the board. So, so the policy doesn't necessarily, you know. Right, the AR.
Yeah, that's the hard, that's the hard part. Okay.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because remember, policy is up here.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I throw out to the, um, to you all now, how do we address adjunct facilities? Rachel?
Tim, I think that, um, 10 should actually be an 11, and there should be a 10 that discusses the adjunct facilities that should similarly mirror, um, what is presently number nine. Um, I think we need to have a conversation of whether or not the naming of adjunct facilities is left at the sole discretion of the SICs, or if it also would be a community committee.
Oh, I definitely think it should be community.
I agree.
I mean, but, and, and if we were to just reference the AR, not, you know, but they do, um.
I don't like referencing ARs personally.
I know, and I understand that, but there's sometimes when you got some good word choices, and it's right in front of you, um.
I think using it as a guiding point and giving us some language is great, in situations like this where we're creating something from nothing, really.
So they don't, they don't, they don't enumerate the different things. So if we go back to, um, if we go back to number nine and just use that wording for adjunct facilities, how would that, how would that work out? Kathy?
I can't see nine. There you go.
Um, so the board will consider recommendations for naming adjunct facilities after receiving, uh, recommendation must be endorsed by at least two-thirds vote from a committee comprised of the requesting school, SIC members, staff, students, and community members.
Yes, that works.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, consider number 10.
Consider names for adjuncts.
And can we put a definition for adjunct facilities? What, what, what does that, what, what does that mean in there?
Et cetera.
Robert, what is an adjunct facility?
It's any facility outside of the main building.
I mean, and that's good, but I, but I think it, it was, once again, it was not a black and white. It's, you know, it's not, you know.
I'm glad Robert's here. So, so any facility other than the main school buildings?
Well, I mean, or, we actually, yeah, you're right, it's like a wrestling room.
And auditorium.
Well, I mean, it's, it's outside of just the name of the main, any small subset.
I didn't mean physically outside. I kind of meant, yeah, like metaphorically outside.
It's not the main building, it's some subset of the main building.
Right. Yeah. Um.
Media set.
Kathy?
Um, our current, uh, policy, uh, does, says adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities. So, you know, we could add that in there.
Where is, sorry, where is that?
That's OE8.
OE8.
OE8, um, 10, 10, see.
See. Yeah, we're gonna, and we're gonna get to that one after this one too.
Yeah, you're right, right. So, you know what, I think it would be an awfully lengthy list to list adjunct facilities. Um, so maybe like Kathy just said, we just use the wording that we had in OE810 to say adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities, and then move on from there.
That's my suggestion.
And that would be, okay, yeah, Kathy, I think that otherwise we would be, we'd have a list a mile long.
I agree.
Tennis courts.
Yeah, that's true.
You know?
So could.
Okay, and then, so this is gonna mimic number nine. Okay, David, wanna, um, share an idea?
Uh, yeah, I, I like it mimicking number nine, because we're, we have to consider and decide.
Right.
We have, we have to get that decision in there, then, then we're making a decision. And I think, put this in, you don't need that next one.
True, so.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, right. Kind of makes it move. Except for David.
Put in and decide after consider.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I, I don't know, consider.
But and decide.
Consider and.
So Wendy's suggesting we say approve, consider and approve.
That's stronger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a question on the way you worded this, because I actually have a situation right now. We're gonna bring to the next operations committee some suggestions for Batter Creek High School. I think they're gonna name the wrestling room.
Right.
And.
Stage.
Yeah, so they're coming with a suggestion that's been approved by the SIC and the principal. Now, your policy says, and it's a unanimous vote, or, uh, it was a unanimous vote, but now you're saying they also have to have staff, well, I guess the principals, it says, and community members. How, what is our, so now the SIC brings a recommendation, so how do we say that they satisfy that? Do they have to now go out and form a committee that pulls in staff and students and community members? And what does that mean?
Oh, great. Rachel. Rachel.
I was gonna say, um, you know, this has to go for a, a full reading and board approval, so, I mean, it, it'll be coming back at a future meeting if the Battery Creek stuff is coming at the next meeting, and it's, um, you know, we just, it, it's a matter of when this takes, uh, full effect.
Well, but my point is, that's a real live situation, and I'm trying to put towards what you just said, to think about what my next step is. So say the next one after Batter Creek. Um, so we just tell the school to go pull a committee together?
Well, I think the AR has, doesn't the AR that, this is what you, that should have been underneath anyway. This is how, you know, uh, Battery Creek should have followed, so naming adjunct facilities.
Just be student improvement council.
So you would follow whatever's in your current AR.
No, but once your policy is.
Right, right. And you gotta follow that.
My question is, how would we tell the school to meet your policy?
Because the AR is gonna be rewritten.
No, 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 no. Okay, I guess that's where we're gonna, so my thing is, so how many students, how many, you know, they give one student, one staff member, the SIC, and one community member, is that satisfied?
Well, to be, to be very honest with you, I don't think that's our level decision. I think the school does us. And so the school comes and says, yeah, we had one parent, okay, we had 1,400 kids, you had one parent, one student, one staff member, and they represented everybody. I personally would say send it back and get more input. So I don't know that we can dictate it must be comprised of 13 people, and six of whom are, I mean.
AR does. The AR.
I guess. Right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Rachel, would you finish? I'm sorry.
Well, the AR has a kind of a guideline for that on the schools one. So I would think that it makes sense, since we're trying to make everything come into alignment, that when the AR is rewritten by administration, that it mirrors that makeup as well. So you could, that's just my assumption.
Okay, so Robert has a comeback question.
Well, no, I mean, I think the way I could see it working is they would do a publicly advertised meeting in their school, and just whoever shows up, it's on that. That's just it. I mean, yeah, they invite all, say, we publicly advertise, and ask for everybody, and everybody's in the room. You're all now on a committee.
Absolutely.
And then you vote with everybody in the room. That's, that's, because that's a major change. SIC, which is an organized committee, to now it's not an organized committee, and you're asking the school to put it together.
Right, I, I think, you know, SICs might get four people. So I, I think it probably should be representative of more people, so open, come on, everybody come, anyone that's interested. And if you don't show, then you don't get a voice, you know? So, David?
Um, thanks. A, a couple of things on number nine, consider and approve, and then we needed to delete, decide on, consider and approve changes. And then on the theoretical question of policies and ARs, policies are supposed to stay kind of broad, and the ARs are the interpretation, so.
Right.
Um, you know, you can interpret it, uh, any way you want to, to form the committees, um, which you all have done really well in the past. So we, we shouldn't do that. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Earl.
Uh, yes, like Rob was talking about Batter Creek, if it's coming, if the recommendation coming from the SIC, the principal, and, and the staff at the school, there's no problem. You know, they, they don't have to vote, they, they will vote, but they don't have to tell us the vote, the number of people that voted for it or, or not. Because they're not gonna bring something to the board unless they have the majority of the votes.
Okay, thank you. Now?
I think, um, Robert has a legitimate question in terms of how much power is allotted to each one of those factors in terms of their committee formation. And, uh, you know, I think it's up to Frank to decide that as a superintendent, and the ARs, what we will look at and decide whether that interpretation meets our, our qualification or not. But certainly, I think personally, that the SIC is, is the fundamental community group in that school, and any other support should not override what the SIC's, uh, uh, numbers should be. So anytime, I don't agree with Robert's interpretation, if we bring in a group of people, and we all vote on it, and the SIC's got 12 members, and there's 20 people coming in without any real long-time focus on, on the school improvement, outvoting them in terms of what direction we're going in. So, yeah, I think, I think Frank needs to kind of set some kind of tone on what that committee gonna look like from a, from a community base, community, through the SICs and whatever. We need to look at it and say, yeah, we'll agree with that if it comes from this group, we'll accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And just, uh, listening to that conversation, I, it, it sounds, well, first, let me get this, let me get this clarification. AR is basically the superintendent interpretation, and we don't bore on that, correct?
Right.
Right, so, so it's, it sounds like like the board itself needs to get some type of clarification of, and then not just on, on these, well, well, when we send out these, when these types of things come to the board, what our level of expectation is. Because just going around, just, just, just the people who are on this call, and, and, and on, on this, uh, company, who's involved in this conversation, there are several different levels of expectations. And I'm not hearing much unisex, because in, 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 in terms of it, Robert brought a good point, which came back to my point, you know, in terms of step one, uh, how many community members, remember? Because you, you want a, a very transparent, clear description of what's taking place, whereas beginning, the committee, committee will always, so it can be fair and objective to every, every time, it's always consistency the same. It's three parents, it's always, it's five kids, uh, six ministers in the community, what, what, whatever the outline is, is, that we're consistent in it, and I don't see that. So the superintendent can come back to the board and give us, the ARs say, well, we heard what y'all said, this is how we're gonna do it. So it's almost like if, if we don't go on it, then we go whatever they say. And at that point, once, 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 once we give them, and once we tell them what we want, and how they see and deem necessary, then they do it how, how they want. And that may not be deemed how the board. And that may not be deemed how the board particularly wants it. But they said that's what they see, and that's how their interpretation is. So there's a problem there. And the problem there is that, that that's not really what the board want, but we're saying that, it, it, maybe, maybe a long social, it's contradictory. And I see a lot of that going consistently, and that's a problem. Because once again, we're not on the, on the same, on the same page. And even to go back, I remember Rachel was, was asking, what she said earlier, she said, oh, what about when they want to change the name or something? What does, what does that, what, what does, do we have to come back to the board for that? And I don't remember hearing exactly saying that, yes, if they want to change the name or something, what that's, what those stuff look like. And, and that goes back to the citizen thing of, they go to the AR, no, it needs to be spelled correctly by the board because the board is the head. We tell the superintendent what we want, and he, and yes, he takes it out, but how he takes it out, it doesn't, it doesn't fix the results, point blank period.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Kathy?
Yes, I'm, just want to let you know I have to leave in five minutes. And I did want to just confirm that our SICs, there are, they're required to have certain members on them. They're required to have a community member, they're required to have parents, and that's spelled out in our SIC, right, you know, guidelines, and that's a requirement, I mean, those things are required, so.
Okay, thank you, David. You're muted, David.
We're gonna eliminate number eleven.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just delete that.
Okay.
And then I think we're in good shape.
I think so, too. So moving on to OE eight facilities, I'm bringing forth a couple of recommendations, OE eight ten. It has four subsections, A, B, C, and D, so OE eight ten.
He eliminated number eleven or what, under what?
It's already covered that the board has the right to change the name of the facility. Okay?
Why would we eliminate that?
Because it's already.
It was redundant.
I'm a curfew patient.
Right.
That's awesome, don't get mad at me.
Nobody's mad. So number ten says, the board will reserve the right to change the name of any facility or adjunct facility when it deems it is in the best interest of the district to do so. Okay, so.
And, and, and I realize that because I hear that, that's a very powerful statement. And so when we're eliminating that, that brings me, that brings me some questioning. And, and that's why I'm asking, while we, while we were eliminating that, even though it says it in one, we're right there, it's clear, it clearly states that under no circumstance, the board has that authority. So even though it may be spelled out in one, but it's not spelled out with that much authority written in it and the other one.
All right, so Mr. Strivenger, would you like to explain why you suggested eliminate it?
I believe it's covered in number ten. That's why I didn't think we needed number eleven. So if, eleven was redundant to ten.
You're talking about the, the, if Mr. Striver's right, he's talking about eliminating number eleven in GC three, correct?
Right, and so can you put that back in there? Can you just go back? One of my things, actually, eleven on here.
You deleted.
It is not.
The one you just read?
Yeah, it's not the one.
Okay, okay.
Okay. There you go, all right, so this number eleven is the one that you, it's a very powerful statement. It shows the power is in the board's hand, and Mr. Strivenger suggested that it's already covered in that we decide on any change or any name of a facility or adjunct facility anyway. Nothing can be named or changed in name unless we decide on it anyway, so he thought it was redundant. Did I put words in your mouth, is that correct, Mr. Strivenger?
You put good words in my mouth, I'm not sure I would have used those same words, but yeah, it's redundant. We've already covered it, we, you know, adjunct facilities can't be changed without our approval.
Right.
Okay.
So Tina?
So where, so I don't see where eleven was previously.
It was ten. Okay, eleven was previously, right, right here.
But which one was?
Okay, so eleven, the number eleven that's on the screen, okay, was OE eight ten D.
Yeah, okay.
I suggested moving it to GC three because I thought it made more sense. So thank you for that, I didn't clarify that, okay?
It was never there, okay.
All right, thank you. So Kathy, Rachel, do we keep it or let it go? What are we gonna bring forward to the whole board?
I think it's redundant, and we already reserve the right and we approve everything in eight, nine, and ten. We cover new facilities, existing, new schools, existing schools, and adjunct facilities, including athletics. So I think it's redundant.
Okay, Kathy?
Yes, I concur.
All right, so quickly, and Kathy, you leave when you need to, but.
Okay.
OE eight facilities, the superintendent shall, okay, so now we're on OE eight ten. There are four subsections, A, B, C, D. I am recommending that we keep A, final approval of new or requests to change school names, mascots, or colors is a sole responsibility of the board. So the superintendent will ensure that, okay? And B, about adjunct facilities, which is really letter C. I'm suggesting we eliminate B and D. B says that schools may not be named for individuals. Well, we have Robert Smalls and we have H. McCracken, and those are individuals.
And Shaglin.
And Shaglin, thank you. And JJK. And keep going, so. So I don't, I suggest. Where? I'm sorry. So we have several schools that are named after individuals, so I suggest we delete that. Okay, David?
Normally, when you have a sentence like this, it's about living individuals, you can't, you can't name a school after a currently living, but you can name it after a deceased. That's normally the, the input, and, and I kind of agree with that.
Okay, good, okay. So how would you like to say that, David?
Yeah, I know, that wasn't too eloquent.
Yes, schools may not be named for living individuals.
Yeah, yeah, just living individuals, that's good.
Schools may not be named for living individuals or living.
Tina?
Yes, I agree with David's comment, I definitely think that's usually how that is interpreted.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I can't, I'm having trouble hearing, William? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and the reason for that is, of course, you know, when somebody hasn't completed their life, you don't know yet if they're going to have some scandal or something very negative come out about them. That's, that's the whole thing, theory behind that.
No, excellent point, excellent, William?
But I disagree with that because of the fact that we, we have, we, we named some other, after Mr. Campbell's is on the board.
These are.
Right, e- even though, but it's still, it's still.
Not adjunct facilities.
Yeah, but that's.
If you look further later on, adjunct facilities may be named after living individuals, but not schools. As, I mean, so.
I mean, yeah, but, but, but basically, that, that goes hand in hand. Because it almost sounds like we're contradicting ourselves because we can name this, we can name inside of this, this area, Dr. Dolittle, and Dr. Dolittle could be living, and he, if he go out and do something to a kid, then what are, what are we saying? That's the same exact name. I mean, a fruit is a fruit, whether it's a grape or orange, a fruit is a fruit. So then we need to take a deep dive.
Robert?
I'd just like to note that we haven't named any new school after an individual in over ten years. So that's kind of been our policy, except like Robert Smalls, because it was a continuation of an existing Robert Smalls. H. McCracken was a continuation of H. McCracken that was previously on the list. So we have not named anything after, so that's, that's kind of a major change if you decide to do that.
Okay, I, I personally like the idea of having the option, you know, if someone is deceased and was a huge contributor to our area in the area of education, that at least it was an option. Not that it would happen, but at least it would be an option. So.
Right, and, and I, I think that we're kind of contradicting ourselves when we say that. When we're naming places after people who are alive, and whether it's the gymnasium, you're still naming that building, the Earl Campbell so-and-so, or the.
So I, I heard you say, Mr. Smith, and, you know, at the same time, that name can be stripped and removed per board policy if there was such a circumstance that required substantive action. So I, I personally am not in agreement of changing that policy that you cannot. It says adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities, may be named for individuals as specified in district administrative regulations. So Rachel, should we just, do you think we should just say adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities, may be named for individuals and keep off as specified in the AR? Isn't that being, isn't that our practice where we're not including that?
Yeah, I don't think we need to include that part because we've already said above in GC, we talk about the composition of the committee, that it's going to require a two-thirds vote and things like that. And I think the, the AR presently lays out pretty specifically, if we were going to name it for someone living, what they have to have contributed or what criteria they have to meet. I don't think we need to get into that.
Okay. So to, to review all this, recommendation is that OE eight point ten shall read, the superintendent shall ensure that any committees appointed to recommend school names, I'm going to suggest that we include in their mascots or colors, understand that, A, final approval of school names, mascots, and colors is a sole responsibility of the Beaufort County Board of Education. B, schools may not be named for living individuals. C, adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities, may be named for individuals, living individuals?
Yes.
Or deceased.
Yeah, I think what you're reading, Tricia, right now is coming from the current OE, is that correct?
Right, OE eight point ten.
Okay, the draft up here, A is slightly different. And B is not the right B.
Right, because we, even down below, I recommended getting rid of B, but now we decided to keep it. So yes, I'm going back to the original right now, not, not my suggestion.
Okay, I like the suggested A here in your draft.
Final approval of new or requested change school names, mascots, or colors is a sole responsibility of the board, period.
Yeah, I like that A better.
Okay, let's keep that. All right, B, school may not be named for living individuals. You agree with that, Rachel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. C, adjunct facilities, including athletic facilities, may be named for individuals. So do we need to clarify, do we have a clarifier in there, living or deceased, does it matter or just?
Interesting. Living individuals, maybe.
Okay. All right, and then D is the one that I, I am recommending we delete because we've already added it into GC three point ten.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, we, we added the, you know, the intent of that.
Right.
Into GC three point ten, okay. Yes, Tina?
So when you say schools may not be named for living individuals, that implies that they can be for deceased individuals.
Correct, correct.
But then when you say adjunct facilities may be named for living individuals, that, that, because that's a positive, I mean, you don't have the not there on that sentence, I think you then should just say that living or deceased, am I right? It's just not as clear.
We want to be, if we want to be super, super clear, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I would, yeah.
Living or deceased individuals, okay. Mel?
I just, she just addressed the same point I had.
Okay, excellent. Excellent, okay, so, um, that takes care of GC three point eight and OE eight point ten. On the agenda, it also talks that we are going to have a discussion about logos, okay? As we all know, for months, you know, we have been grappling with a concern brought forward to us by the local community about the, I'm going to use the term logo because that's what I believe it is, the logo that is on the football field. Although I wasn't sure that was the primary purpose in the beginning. I wasn't sure it was just all about the football field. I asked that question and never got an answer. It was just about the football field. So I thought it was more about the preservation of the history. I thought it was more about ma- making sure that the current students and future students knew about the history, the amazing history. And about the in- insurance that the mascot stayed the eagle. So that was a particular example, all right? So back to more generic. A mascot, in, in my opinion, is that which is decided by the board after recommendations from various committees. Names, mascots, and colors. A logo is just a depiction of that mascot. So, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be specific, if it's an eagle, it's an eagle. And sometimes the eagle looks different throughout, right, throughout the years and that, you know, as a, as the logo depicted differently. So I'd like to hear some other thoughts on the comparison of a mascot and a logo and maybe what policies, if any, should regulate logos. If other people see it as a distinction. Okay, Tina, your hands still up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the committee first, I'll go after that.
Okay, Rachel, you're, you and me, we're at the committee right now.
Um, I, I agree with you, I think the logo is the purview of the individual principal and, you know, whoever is making that determination at the site. I think what we have clarified, I think, today in our policies is that the actual mascot, whether that's a tiger, a gamecock, or whatever, the depiction of it is left at the discretion of that facility or that school. I don't think that's, logos require approval by the board. I think if we got into doing that, then we'd be doing that perhaps every year for thirty-three different facilities. And that's a lot.
Right, and for every different sports team. And for, when I, when I looked up logos, and I've been doing, you know, the research on it, you know, logos of companies and so on, let's take Starbucks, for example, you know, it, the logo has changed. You know, Google changes its logo, and, and I think in, in, in this case, as determined by the resolution voted on by the board the other night, Tuesday night, the board recognizes that the mascot at Beaufort High School, for example, is the eagle. The colors are green and white. And as, like you just said, Rachel, the policies that we are going to propose to the board that we just worked on are going to suggest that the name, mascot, and colors are purview of the board, but not the logo. Logos, the myriad logos. Tina, what are your thoughts?
Exactly what the two of you have said.
There's a, there's a difference.
There's a distinction. The mascot, like you said, for school, we've been talking about, like sometimes, is the eagle. There are going to be different logos, and those are going to. There are going to be different logos and um those are going to change with time. And it's not to say that, you know, one is eliminated or they're going to be, they're going to be different ones. And that's what all these companies do. I mean, to say that you can never, I mean, I think if you said there always had to be one logo, it had to be trademarked.
William?
There's several things that, that um I, I hear what you're saying about, about change, uh changing their logo or whatever you call it. First off, to me, it's not a logo, it's about branding. And when we talk about people who are changing, these are companies, multi miller companies who change their logos. That's why this is not a logo, this is a brand. This is who you are, this is how you identify yourself, no different than your social security number. You can't just happen to change them. I mean, to my knowledge, if there's you, there's, I'm sure there's a dagger of reason why you do that. So we're sort of saying that when you have a brand, and those companies who should do change their brand, or they change their logo, there's a reason probably because they've been sued or they got in trouble or something distasteful has rolled that brand. So they're trying to change their image on who they are or people perceive them as. So with the brand and the, and not the, the logo, I, I think you have, I mean, the mascot? The mascot is the brand of the school. So, and, and I've been, I've been researching this since it's gotten, it's gotten started. Not many places across this country change their mascot, AKA brand, I'm gonna call it brand, because your brand identifies who you are. So when we get this conversation, and we're talking about someone who's talking about principals. So then that means that the principal, why did they, they're going to change it? Why did he need to bring it, bring it, bring it before the board? Uh, uh, and everything that we've said in those last steps, that's invalid. Because the principal does not own that house or that building. The principal is the, is the person who has the, who has the authority to, and then, and then, and then the board gives the superintendent and the superintendent gives the authority to that administrator to be held accountable for what happens in that house. Just because you, just because when you're running the house, when you go out and enter the house, you don't go in and start tearing down the house and doing stuff that you want with the, without the, without, without the, the homeowners, the homeowners approve. So once again, the taxpayers, in this, in this instance, they are the homeowners. So why should we allow one person or a group of people to go in there and change stuff up? So we have to be very careful about what we're saying here. Because you can't open up any of those boxes.
Right. So let me ask you a basic question. Are logos and mascots the same?
No, no, they're not.
They're different, right? Logos and mascots are different. So as the ma- okay, so wait, oh, can I ask another? Dr. Bruder, do you have your doctorate in communications? Would it involve some knowledge of mascots and logos? And can I put you on the spot and ask your opinion?
In the, the communication world, the logo can be adapted with a mascot, it stays the same.
Okay, the logo can be adapted, but the mascot is staying the same. So I think it sounds to me that under the purview of the board, which is really why we're here, what policy, I mean, should logo be added to any of our policies? Mel?
Well, my question is, is logo a part of the school in the first place? We're creating the logo as a part of describing the mascot and who regulates that? And uh, uh, in my opinion, this situation kind of gives us credibility that we need to do more than just let the principals or schools at their own judgment, change that mascot's depiction any way they want to do it and call it a logo. Because it obviously this situation just didn't arrive without, if you're going to have the schools do it, then, I mean, the I mean, you could get a bunch of depictions from one thing to another in terms of what that logo might show. And it could get very political in terms of what that logo might show. We have to, somebody have to regulate that. You can't, we can't always put out the fire after the storm, uh, uh, you know. But somebody have to regulate what's going on in the schools. And, and this situation got to this point because nobody defined how we're going to utilize that logo per se in terms of usage and how it's gonna interwine with the mascot as usage. And folks didn't get that clar- clarified then, and we went on and did some changes. And the board saying it's off our hands, but it's got the community in an uproar, one way or the other. You know, it could be both ways, but it's, it's good that for our sake, the other part of it is people are not really trying to protect that, that logo change as much as people are trying to keep it from changing. But uh, in my mind, we have to do something from a board perspective to regulate what happens with the, with the logos too. And I don't know what your proposal is, but everybody knows that the logo's uh not the same as the mascot. I don't think that folks were concerned just about football, as some, as uh you said, Tricia. I think folks were concerned with the fact that it was being remapped. I don't know, at, at a pace where eventually the original eagle would disappear. All it was, the dollar bill, and I've got a few of them. So it's got the same eagle on it. It had on it all the time.
Rachel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there might be a piece of information, may or may not be a piece of information, we might not have here. And that's whether or not there's currently an AR in regard to logos. I feel like there might be one because a lot of our logos kind of overlap with university trademarks or other NFL kind of trademarks and things like that. And we have to be careful of those things. So there might be other pieces that we're missing to this conversation. And if Wendy or anybody else has anything on that, I'd be interested.
Um, Wendy, Wendy's indicating that there, she is not aware of an AR on logos. Go ahead.
There, there is an AR, uh, there's an AR of copyrights and that type of thing. And Dr. Stansky pointed something out here is anytime we are naming a new facility, be careful because of research, I could not find any statutes that deal with this in South Carolina, but in West, in Nevada and Oklahoma, um, it'd be very careful about a name you choose, especially there are a lot of names vibes there. And those names, you'd have to be very careful. I'd pick a name that's offensive, but I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing any type of administrative regulation of going wrong. I, I don't think that there's a, a logo's administrative.
Okay, so I think it kind of boils down to is, is a logo under the board's purview per policy?
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be? Go ahead, Rachel?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that um maybe something that could address this, that isn't as firm as that the board has to approve every logo or things like, or those individual changes. Because like I mentioned, that would probably be much more frequent than a name, color or mascot change. Um, I think that perhaps we direct the superintendent to um adopt an AR that does address the process for logos, so that there is uniformity, so that there is a process. Um, and then that's certainly within our purview as a board to say the superintendent needs to create an AR that the schools have to operate under regarding logos.
Yep. I think that's a, that's a excellent idea.
But would the board want to approve the logo?
No.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think there needs to be a process that's clearly outlined, because if there's not an AR right now on logos and logos is one of the, the issues here, um, then we probably need one. And the board is who directs the policy that the ARs are created from, so.
And we're right back where we are right now.
So Tina?
Can you talk to, actually?
Yes.
I look through the bill policies and ARs and all that, there's nothing addressing logos. I concur that.
Right.
And I think uh Rachel's idea is exactly, I will concur in that too. I think if the board gets into approving every logo, that's going to be our, our business, you know, every single meeting. That, that's, that, it should be a process that's consistent, so the public knows. And I do think that should be developed by the superintendent through the car. And, and, and process for approving, but not come back and be there every time. I can tell you, as a parent of often high school graduates, they have multiple logos, excuse me.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I believe it's hard to hear. It's hard to hear, thank you. Oh, wow. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, so, oh, they have multiple, so they have the, the silhouette of the uh bobcat, that's their kind of main logo. But then they have like claws, they have bees, for example, that are green and black on the um, on baseball hats, as I recall. They have uh, uh, like cross-country head, the colors are, are green and white, I believe. Pretty sure it's green and white. There's a lot of black mixed in, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of variety. And I don't know who designed each of those
Right.
those logos per se.
No, I agree. My two kids graduated from Beaufort High and there are examples of different depictions of the eagle, but it's always an eagle. Mel, your hand up again?
I, I concur with Rachel that we need to establish some type of of superintendent direction so that there is parameters in terms of the use of logos. I've, you know, I've said, when I said earlier, logos could go astray in a hurry and all of a sudden you don't recognize what the mascot is. But on top of that, it could undermine the original intent of the mascot. So, yeah, we, I think we do need to put some things in place where the thing that happened at Beaufort High doesn't happen again without at least the superintendent being fully aware of the changes that were made. I mean, uh, I think LA Hilton Head High was probably the first school that started shifting the logo. Uh, and that happened way back in the nineties. Logos began to change, changes, it's, it's outlook. From the old tired Seahawk to a upscale Seahawk that was crashing two blocks. And that, that led to some controversy, but then we thought getting a little bit more cerebral looking Seahawk. But none of it was vetted to any degree by the board. But bottom line is, nobody knows what the Seahawk really looks like now. But there are still some old Seahawk uh illustrations out there that some people are still using, but it's shifted quite a bit over time. And I don't think it has the history that Beaufort High has, so people didn't fight it as much. So that's the reason why we need somebody to monitor the changes. Any principal can come in anytime and do what he wants to do with those logos, and that's not fair to the history.
Yep. So Rachel, I think that was a, a excellent suggestion and Mel concurred. Um, Rachel?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may make a motion?
Sure, please.
Why should Bush give that something new?
No, excuse me, she's, we've got to wrap this up. She's a committee member, we need to move it forward. So I'll come back to you because there'll be a discussion, okay? Go ahead, Rachel.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that the policy committee recommend the creation of OE eight eleven. And I'll, do you want me to put it in the chat, Robin? What's easier?
Okay.
I'll put it in the chat. Uh, one sec.
Okay, so while you're doing that, while you're doing that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, y'all make your minds, but my whole, my whole thing about it is, you know, listen to what she said. Giving the authority to the principals was what Amanda said the first time. And making that decision, saying that, giving that up to the principal is the reason why we're here, because obviously the principal allowed him to make all those changes. And that's why we're here, because it took, not only took the original, the re- original, the origination of it, but it also took the definition of what it stood for, the em- the emblem. It, it took, it took, it took uh the definition from of what it stood for, it may, it may have to be a cartoon character. So doing, doing this, it does not solve our problem. And, 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 and just hearing our board members talk, I don't care, that's what we signed up for. If we have to come here and meet every week, hell, that's what we signed up for. We have to come in and, and do that. So if, 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 every time it changes, they have to bring it forth, then that, then that's our job. That's, that, that's what we signed up for, the board members. So maybe some of us, it's time for a rethink. I mean, that, our job is to ensure those things as well. And, 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 I mean, a little frustrated right now, but now that's, that, that's, we'll get right back where we started from when we did go. So, so doing this, it does no, no justice as board members. It is our job to be sure that we, that, that we are making sure that what happened does not happen. And doing this, I'm not sure that, 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 that is going to prevent it happening again.
The only response I would have to that is in the absence of any direction on how to determine a logo, providing direction on exactly how to do it will perhaps keep this from happening again. See, because, because William, there has been no process that a principal could say, okay, here's, here's an AR on how to go about a logo. Oh, I have to do this, I have to do this, I have to do this. There's been nothing. So, so I, I just respectfully disagree that by now having a process by which a principal has to follow to change or to approve a logo, it, it certainly could make a difference.
That, that, that's not what I got. She said it should not come to the board. When she first said it, she said if, when a principal makes the logo, or, or whatever, she said it should have to come to the board. That's my problem.
Okay.
And if it doesn't come before the board.
Yeah.
Then, then, then just go ahead and make it, give us the mark, be done with it.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody, just be more happy.
Okay, all right. Okay, Rachel, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am. I put it in a chat, but I'll, I'll read it real quick.
Okay.
And I move that the policy committee recommends to the board the following change. OE eight eleven to state, quote, shall ensure that district administrative regulations regarding creation or changes to school logos and crests are outlined, monitored and followed. And move the current OE eight eleven to be an OE eight twelve. Um, so basically what this is saying is that the superintendent will be responsible for making sure that there is a process regarding logos and/or crests, because I know there's crests, I think, maybe at the high school level. Um, uh, that there is a process for it. It's outlined in an AR, because presently we don't have one, that he monitors it and that those processes are consistently followed. I, I disagree with Mr. Smith. I don't think that logos need to come to the board level. But I do think that we need to have a policy that dictates there's an AR for this, and that's what's going to happen in the future.
Okay, I second that. Okay. Any more discussion? Mel, did you want to comment on this? I know you already supported this anyway, development of AR.
We're on target, we can't, you know, we're not the legislative, the change in the system and how the, how they advertise the schools. That's becoming a bigger, bigger part of things than educating. So, but we, we can regulate it through superintendent.
Okay. All right, any other comments? No? All right, all in favor? Aye? Okay, it passes. Um, Rachel, how about a motion for the other changes that we discussed regarding GC three point eight, a motion for that to bring to the full board as well as the changes for OE eight ten?
Yes, ma'am. So I move that the policy committee recommends to the board the proposed changes to OE eight ten and GC three point eight.
So we need to put with the addition of GC three point nine and GC three point ten?
Yes, ma'am.
With the addition of GC three point
Nine.
Nine and ten.
Right. I'll second that.
And I just need to see it in final and then I can. Yep, that's good.
Okay, I second that, so any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Ask unanimously.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, we can talk about a future meeting date at later time, okay? All right. All right, thank you very much, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for your input.